And, you know, I think the council was asking me for my immediate, kind of like, what are you seeing, what do you think? And I shared that I thought that the staff was understaffed in a few key areas. And the feedback I got was people saw that as well. And also, when I was going through the recruitment process, several council members had expressed a willingness to add an additional position to the administration or community development department. So I think, I guess, that's all to say, I think we're all on kind of the same page that there's a need. Overall, the city eliminated 11 FTE positions and added 6.25 positions, most of which were at a lower pay grade, for a net reduction of almost five positions from mid-2018 to the end of 2021. So in a two-and-a-half-year period, that was a reduction of 8% of the city's staff. That's a sizable reduction. The workload didn't reduce by 8% over those same years. And in a lot of ways, the workload's gotten more complex. We're adding a lot of households through redevelopment, so there are more residents to serve. So again, I don't think I'm telling you anything you don't know, that there's a need out there. So the department directors and I, we've had some really in-depth conversations about staffing needs. And we all agree that there's a need to evaluate the long term. And we don't want to be in a hurry to do that. We want to take our time and make sure we're giving you some good proposals. We also don't know exactly how we would fund some of those long-term things. So we want to wait until the 2023 budget discussion to talk about the longer-term staffing needs. But what we do want to talk about are some needs in 2022, or in the case of the finance department, really a need in 2021, because it's been sitting out there as an unfilled position. So the immediate needs are a reorganization of our finance department, the addition of a police officer to meet needs arising from turnover and leaves, a community development and/or community services director, and then evaluating a couple of positions to make sure we've got them properly placed in the pay scale. In terms of the finance department, the former accountant resigned from their position in November. And so for those four or five months, the finance department has been operating short-staffed. Those are really a critical four or five months in terms of doing all the year-end work that needs to be done. And so Dan and his team have really stepped up and been working kind of over and above, for sure. And I think everybody recognizes that. Director Winnick evaluated his staff structure in the fall, and based on the needs of the department and the recommendations of our auditors, he's been advocating a restructuring since late last year. You know, I think even before I started, Director Winnick was telling me about, you know, what his ideas were. And so this is something he's put a lot of thought into. And he really wants to make sure that we're allowing for redundancies and cross-training and job responsibilities. And Dan said he wanted me to kind of take some of this on. Are you sure you want me to hand this off to you?
[Laughter]
All right. Allowing for redundancies and cross-training in job responsibilities to better accommodate variances in the needs of the community, to have adequate backup in the case of absences or staff turnover, improving in accounting and financing processes and internal controls, aiding in succession planning, and helping to retain excellent staff that we have and better attract new employees. So this year's approved budget does include the position of accountant. Director Winnick believes that the needs of the organization and the community would be better served by expanding the roles of several existing positions. Instead of hiring a new accountant, the recommendation is to reclassify two existing positions. They're a G7 and a G8, a senior billing technician and a utility building coordinator, as two G10, grade 10, finance, accounting coordinator positions. And when the employees currently filling those roles move up, you know, they leave vacancies behind them, a couple people move up into those, and they leave vacancies behind them, and a couple, and one person moves up into that, and one would get filled externally. So all of this would be able to be implemented without any increase to the net number of personnel, or without any increases to the personnel expenditures that were approved in the budget. So it's a budget-neutral, and maybe even a budget-positive, step that allows us to have the tools that the finance department needs. With the police department, the city council did approve one additional sergeant and one additional part-time CSO in 2021. But it's been nearly impossible to achieve actual staffing levels that were intended or allow the police department to safely provide the level of service that's needed in the community. And I think, I keep walking by something that just reminds me of this over and over and over again. Right out on the wall there, there's the pictures of all the police departments, or police officers, and there's frames for everybody. We've never had pictures while I've been here in all of those frames, because of the turnover, because of people out for various reasons. And we want to make sure there's pictures in all the frames, is kind of what it comes down to. We've got the positions. Just by circumstances, we're never able to fill them all. And by adding one additional police department, we feel like we can, we can get it fully staffed. And, give me a second. We can get fully staffed in a way that is, we can accommodate in the budget. There were budget savings in 2021. I don't like the word surplus, but they're, that's the best, that's the only word I can come up with at the time. For 2021, there was a, our expenditures were less than we expected, and our revenues were either greater than expected, or they offset in a way that we came out ahead. And so we are able to use 2021 savings to help fund this additional police officer. I'm recommending that it be, I'm calling it an augmentation of our police force, and that it would be in place for the entirety of 2022, and that we reevaluate it as part of the 2023 budget process. It could be very well that we say, let's keep doing this while there's funding available and while there's a need. On the other hand, the police department could completely stabilize. We could get people in, have them stay in place, hopefully have fewer people out with injuries, and stabilize the police department where the chief may feel more comfortable with the staffing levels. So if we, if we did conclude that we no longer needed the position for those reasons, we would eliminate a position. Now, we wouldn't eliminate this new hire. We would eliminate a position through attrition, meaning that in 2023 or beyond, when a police officer were to retire on their own volition, or resign and move to a different place, we just wouldn't fill the position. I think that that helps meet the needs that Chief Babenroth sees. I don't think that it meets all of, all of his hopes and goals. And we did attach a study that the chief wanted to share with you. And I don't know if you want to tag onto that a little bit about the future.
Yeah, just a couple, a couple of things. So one additional police officer would help in the immediate, where we're hoping to have four officers on each shift, on each, on each team. We currently don't have that. With the addition of one police officer, we'd be able to have four across the board. So all, all days and nights, we have four on each team. So that's three officers and one sergeant to make up that four. We currently don't in our staffing model. I don't know if you saw that staffing breakdown that I included in my not-so-short write-up for everyone. But one would get us, so 19 authorized would give us four on each team, day and night. And then I would also hope that, looking forward, we have two more additional officers, one for, one as a backup to our current one investigator, because they're currently operating where we're seeing increase of caseloads that they've got since 2016. And at the end of the day, if there's only one person in that position, that means that that one investigator has a tough time taking a vacation, because the work doesn't go away when they're on vacation. It just piles up. So they know that they can't truly enjoy their time away, knowing that it works to their benefit to get back sooner, so they don't have a growing pile of work to do. And the caseload that they're, that our investigator is seeing being increasing for the past couple of years, it makes sense for us to be able to take a more proactive approach on the investigation side by having a second investigator. Third one that I would hope to bring on eventually is a community service officer, a dedicated police officer that is their sole responsibility, and is getting out into the community and doing presentations for crime prevention, and then also helping us out for vacation relief on the street to reduce overtime. But those are the, hopefully, not too long-term of goals that I would have. So three is really the total number, but one in the immediate, as City Manager Stark said. If we had one more, we'd be able to round out each team at four officers, days and nights.
I'm kind of hearing conflicting. So in the near future, I mean, for, we'd hire one.
Correct.
For the 2022.
Yep.
But in the future, you're thinking hiring two more.
Two more would be, that would put us in a great place.
Three budget. And I think that's discussion that we would have.
Yep.
Or whatever. But for the, for right now, we're looking at the one position.
Correct.
And then discussion this summer with the budget. You'll be recommending possibly two.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and like I said, the department directors, we, we sat down and discussed this as a group, and I think there are going to be needs everywhere. And I'm sure there are going to have to be compromises. You know, you can't always get what you want, as they say. Hopefully, we can. It'd be nice if we could. But we would like to come to you kind of in a, in a more holistic way later in the year and say, here are the, the longer-term needs, and the resources we would need to fill those. So we'll get there, and that's why the other department directors are here, is to kind of support that, that they are fine with having a more limited discussion tonight about 2022, but they're looking forward to having a broader discussion about the future years. The other piece in the police department, we do have a position currently, I think the title is Police Administrative Assistant, but they manage and administer all of the records. And it's a really sought-after position by police forces all over the metro. And they're, we believe they're performing job functions that exceed the job specification, the job description. So we'd like to bring in, we'd like to review the job description, review the pay for that. And we would look to kind of an outside consultant to help us look at that, to make sure it's appropriately placed. We want to retain, you know, we want, we want to be paying the right prices for the right services and retain our employees. So that's something we would look at. In terms of community development or community services, since 2018, the combined staffing for community development and administration has been cut by nearly 50%. The positions which were completely eliminated include a community development director, a community services director, and a parks and recreation coordinator. The responsibilities of some other positions which were eliminated during the past four years have been outsourced to consultants, including our building inspector, a planning technician, and our communications coordinator. The result of the staff elimination and contraction is that the city manager is now effectively the department director of administration, community development, and community services. And I don't feel like I can adequately manage all those functions and that many direct reports. I currently have nine direct reports, in a manner that allows the community to grow and evolve in the ways that I'm hearing that you and the community members envision. So I'm proposing that we add the position of community development or community services director. Among the responsibilities of the position would be to supervise the community development staff, which is planning, zoning, and building inspections, to manage long-range planning in conjunction with our WSB planning staff, to assist the EDA executive director in managing redevelopment projects and business assistance programming, to assist the HRA executive director. And so, just to be clear, the EDA and HRA executive director is me. To assist in creating and managing housing programming, and to assist the city manager and community development staff in creating, implementing, and managing recreation programs, kind of in the near term. We'll address the far term again when we talk about the budget. Several of our peer cities with population counts close to ours do have a community development director, including Little Canada, Mounds View, and Vednes Heights. My recommendation would be that the position be at a grade 18. Currently, our department directors vary from grade 18 to grade 23, with a starting salary range of $102,000 to $112,000 plus benefits. Since the position would do work associated with the city, planning, zoning, and business inspections, the EDA and the HRA, the recommendation is the funding would generally be 50% EDA, 30% city, and 20% HRA. I would also recommend increasing the percentage of my time that is allocated to the EDA. The current allocation is 10%, and I would anticipate, anticipate spending more time on EDA activities. So I would probably look at bumping mine up to more like 15% going toward the EDA, which would free up some of the general fund money that's spent on me. The EDA's been anticipating the addition of staff with unallocated funds of $107,000 in their 2022 budget. And the HRA budgeted approximately $47,000 for an unfilled position in the 2022 budget. An ongoing funding commitment from the general fund to cover the 30% of the employee's salary and benefits would need to be addressed as part of the future budget and levy considerations. We don't think that that 30% would be burdensome enough to be a concern. When I talk about this position, you'll note, I keep saying community development slash community services and not one or the other. I'd want to have some flexibility in the naming of the position and the job responsibilities. And the reason for that is, you know, every candidate has a different skill set. And I'd want to make sure whoever we hire, we're kind of capitalizing on their, on their best skills. So if somebody came to us with more, a little more parks and recreation experience, we might tweak it a little bit, or if they come to us with a little more redevelopment experience. So I just want to be responsive to the people in the job market. And then finally, the deputy clerk and the city manager, deputy clerk slash city manager executive assistant position, that position which is held by Jenny Cluse. I've reviewed the responsibilities of that position, and I've determined that it's been conducting job responsibilities that exceed those that are in the job description. A lot of the responsibilities are human resources work, and some things which are otherwise reserved solely for department directors, including routine policy-level interaction with elected officials, the ability to independently manage administrative items in the city council agenda, the ability to independently approve invoices, and a limited ability to take some disciplinary action. The position is currently a grade 10 position. I am recommending that the job description be updated to show actual duties performed, plus some additional duties, and reclassified somewhere between G12 and G15. The pay grade that is ultimately chosen would be so, done so in consultation with the city attorney and with a human resources professional. The main issue to determine is whether the responsibilities meet the Fair Labor Standards Act definition of an exempt or salaried employee. Currently, the city's lowest exempt position is G15. And so Soren has some human resources background as well, and he would help me with that exempt test. You go through kind of a series of questions. Does the employee do this, 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 this? And if the answer is yes to any of these, then they're likely an exempt employee. So that's a lot of talk about positions, and I think I'm going to pause it there and give you a chance to ask questions about the positions we've been talking about.
Let's go ahead and let's go back to the first one. And that would be the, the immediate needs, and I believe the first one is the police department?
Finance was the first.
Correct. So the finance. Let's go ahead and talk about that first, and then we'll just go down, go down the list. So any questions in regards to the finance? Councilmember Cole?
I've got nothing at this point.
Councilmember what?
I have no questions.
Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, I guess my question is that, obviously, we're in a pretty competitive job market, and we were able to rely on your wife coming in and filling in this void that we've had. Is there any idea, or like, she may fill this role and be a full-time employee, or is that?
Councilmember Thorson, no, that's a very good question. So in all actuality, I've utilized my wife in the accountant role basically for bank reconciliations. So to date, she started in December. To date, she's worked approximately 91 hours, which has cost the city about $3,600, where we're saving approximately $12,500 a month without an accountant. What I see as my, my immediate need for 2022 is, and this means no disrespect for, for people who have been here in the city before, is that I can fill that role of the accountant. I just went through probably the toughest part that I'm going to, and that is getting prepared for the audit, and going through the audit. And I think we got one more day of that. There'll be some follow-up questions. But we've been very successful. The team has really risen through that, that time period. What I can't endure is having some key personnel, meaning our utility person, Barb, or the person who's doing our payroll and accounts payable, Jackie, to walk out the door. We have no redundancies built to date. And so what I'm doing is I'm for, for me personally, the easiest thing for me to do is to go out and hire an accountant right now. That's something that I'll look, you know, maybe as we look at our prioritizations in 2023, have a request in there for that. Eventually, it's something that is going to be necessary. But I need, need to build redundancies on a day-in, day-out basis to make sure that this city is in the best position that it possibly can be. Later on, I need to build a redundancy- Later on, I need to build a redundancies on the top in succession planning for, for myself and to make sure that we're covering both ways from bottom to top, and making sure that, how I look at it, is that every job responsibility has a primary and secondary person. And we don't have, you know, any gaps that are there in case something were to happen to an employee or they make a decision to retire. I think this is the best move right now where we're at, and I've been adamantly kind of pushing it since the fall time of last year. And I just think we have a very talented, dedicated staff right now. I want to keep them engaged. I want to make sure that our positions are being adequately compensated, which I don't believe they are today. And for me, again, from a very budgetary conservative way, I didn't want to increase the levy of 2022, and so this will actually save money. If an accountant is not, if we're not able to get one in 2023 budget, I may bring in an accountant on a temporary basis to help fill some of those gaps. But I need to go through this process of building this redundancy, do an assessment of how the staff is doing. There's going to be some additional functions for, for some of the individuals and making sure that they can handle those and build those redundancies. By the, you know, by the time we're really into developing the 2023 budget, I'll have a good gauge on, on whether the existing staff will be able to do that. But right now, I have been just utterly pleased, and I think that the number of individuals have been underutilized and have not been given the opportunity to really get to their full potential. But I have been seriously totally impressed with, with staff and, and not, not to, you know, not mention everybody's name, but, you know, to have Barb and Jackie raise their bar that much higher. I, it, you know, I put in a number of extra hours through the audit period, but I could not have been as successful as I, as I have in those comments I've come back from our auditors if it wasn't for the staff and for their, for their dedication. And so I think in 2022, this is the right move for us. Down the road, yes, I'm going to have to look for an accountant, and I've talked to the city manager. I'm holding open that, that caveat that if it doesn't happen in 2023, that we could bring back in a temporary accountant to help through some of the busiest periods of the, of the year. For that accountant who's been here, even though I am related to that person, I've never worked with that person before. I was totally amazed with their capabilities and has really been very helpful for the city, has really engaged with existing staff very, very well. And so, all in all, coming in here and through the turnover that had occurred and then losing a key component like the accountant, we actually are doing pretty, pretty well. So, yeah, I'm, I'm very pleased.
Well, I'm glad to hear that there's a lot of, you know, thinking into the future and, you know, I think traditionally you've kind of been reactionary, and it's good to, good to see that we're planning ahead for the future, like the things you're talking about, building some redundancies in these positions, and so that's good to hear.
And, and part of that, I'd like to also follow up, is that I don't want to jump ahead and add an FTE at this point in time because there may be some, some ways that we can reduce some tasks. We've looked in the past of the possibility of like contracting out for, like our payroll services. You know, that's a very time-sensitive, time-consuming process. That may be something that we decide, hey, you know, we feel comfortable, there's, we've already looked at a number of different systems. That may be something that we seriously want to move into instead of, you know, adding the staff components to it. But I think this, this reconfiguration will also give us an opportunity to develop a little bit more segregation of duties and tighten up our internal controls a little bit more where I think that we've been, you know, just because of the peer size that we haven't had in the past.
You got G7 and G8. They're going to be stepping up to G10. Those are the two positions. Are they trained to be the G10s, or are you going to need more training for these two individuals? More schooling? Are they already doing the work that a G10 is, is doing?
Yes. One of the positions, the, who oversees utilities, actually in the marketplace is quite a bit under-market rate. If that individual were to retire, we would have a tough time hiring somebody at that, at that rate that that individual is, is doing. They currently are really overseeing, supervising two individuals. They, you know, I mean, our utilities are generating approximately $16 million a year. We have had no significant issues in a number of years. They've done an excellent job. As far as necessarily the education background, I think they make up for that just because of all the years of experience, and, and they've done a superb job. On the other side to it, the person who, who would have that other position is actually doing 85% of the finance coordinator's position to date. The biggest component that they're not doing is the bank reconciliations, which can't get that person there because they have too much on their plate. I need to, to, to build another person who, right now, her name is Angie, who started in the city approximately a year ago, has, we're already training her into doing accounts payable. Now, with this approval, we can get the full push, and then that'll unload some, some of the job responsibilities that, that go along with that. So then, yeah, we can get her fully.
And not having the accountant person who's doing those duties, is it, are they taking responsibility off the, some of the accountant, or is that totally falling on you?
It's kind of a split. They'll take a number of responsibilities, actually through, through the audit part to it. I've taken on more of the, the journal entering part to it. They review and approve on the system, so we have, you know, the segregation of the duties. You know, to me, I'm very comfortable, not, not forever, and that's where eventually, after we've done an assessment of how this comes, there may be a need for, for, you know, an accountant and definitely for succession planning purposes.
But it sounds like the accountant was kind of a, during the, during the audit cycle is kind of when they're needed the most, it sounded like, or?
Absolutely.
Maybe there is something that.
Yeah, I mean.
Could be a temporary or?
And that's really where, you know, and that, and that's where, you know, I had come in, I think it was in December, and talked to the city council about my, you know, kind of a temporary plan and trying to get the support. That's what I had seen, was that the push is going to come through this audit, you know, finishing up all the, the year end, and then there's quite a few work papers that we need to prepare for the audit, auditors. And the auditors are really kind of an extension of the city. They're our team, too. And so they've been fantastic to, to work with. But to be able to do that and to make that push, you know, I needed to have some pieces that, that I could rely on somebody that had the knowledge, skills, and abilities, and had been there, done that, and that I truly trusted to be able to take that. So then it would allow me the time to, to, to really delve into, you know, the accounting part, which has benefited the city greatly because I know just about everything that's going on inside the financial world of the cities, and I had to learn on a crash course. So, yeah, so it's been, so actually, it is fit very well for my own learning style, and I think it's benefited the city greatly.
Any other questions for finance director? Not? Good job. Thank you. We'll move on to the police department, and any questions for Chief Bevroth? Councilmember Cole?
No, no questions from what was presented. Just a follow-up question to how the hiring's going for the open positions. Were you getting anywhere?
It's, it's a struggle. You know, we're, every agency across the state and country is seeing the depleted applicant pool, so the numbers are down. We, we have three awesome folks that just started a week and a half ago now. So we were able to find three quality applicants, and then we are, our pool is still open. So we're getting there. They're increasing from the last round, so that's what we like to see.
And having a famous police chief doesn't hurt.
Right?
Right. Appreciate it.
Councilmember what?
As for the, the short term, I think that makes a lot of sense. I also appreciate some of the data and the information that you had included in there for the long term. I think that helps frame it up and, you know, for us to consider when we come to budget. So I have no questions.
I know it's been a tough, tough year, tough year and a half for, for police. Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, just some comments. I mean, I, you know, I, I support what you're proposing. I think, you know, we need to acknowledge that, you know, society's changing. It always is. I mean, at some one point in time, I think we only had one or two officers in North St. Paul because it's all we needed, but that was a long time ago and different times. And, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, in reading your narrative that you shared with us, you know, it, it, it's not good to hear people wanting to move out of town because of increasing crime and, and, you know, there's not a simple solution. Hiring three, four, five more officers isn't going to change that. It's a bigger issue. But to ensure that our officers here can provide services to our residents and business owners in that, you know, safety is the utmost concern, that, you know, reinvesting more in the police department and public safety is, is kind of a no-brainer. How we finance that and pay for that, I think, you know, I've kind of touched on that in the past and comments I've made when it comes to public safety and some of the things our fighter department does in the police department. There's potentially some crossover there. But, you know, that's another discussion we can have at another time. But as far as hiring more officers go, I've shared that same frustration and the fact that we've had 17 sworn officers approved, but we've just never been able to hit that. And it's for a lot of different reasons, and it just is getting harder and harder now. With the last two, three years it's gone on that, you know, who wants to be a police officer? Kind of idea if you're coming out of high school, you know, it's kind of a, it's, it's not as a popular field choice as it once was back in the, you know, several years ago. But personally, I support what you're proposing, and, you know, we'll trust in the city manager and finance to, to make it happen.
Thank you.
I think the newspaper article was a big, a big deal, you know, changing the narrative. And I think that's kind of what we're trying to accomplish here, is change the narrative. And it is good to be a police officer, and it's good to be a community, you know, a community officer. And I think North St. Paul, you know, we, we have a lot to offer here. We got a great chief. We got a great police force, so I hope we have, you know, 100 applicants rather than a handful. So, I mean, I agree with, with the narrative here, what Councilmember Thorson said also. But I do look forward to, you know, discussion, you know, this summer in regards to the next budget cycle, in regards to what are those needs, you know, how do we, how do we even help you even more if we can, if we can?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else for chief? If not, we'll move on to the community development and community service director. You know, go to Councilmember Cole.
At this point, I have no questions. I think I'll have a lot come summer. You're, you're, no matter what, there needs, my opinion is you're still understaffed with only adding one position. And my assumption is coming forward with the ask that is put forth is that the current budget can't afford to bring on an additional person.
Correct.
Okay. So it's a Band-Aid, but we're not, so, okay.
Baby steps is maybe a good way of saying it.
Councilmember what?
I have no questions.
Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, I, you know, this is something I think, you know, we're all aware of, that one person can't do the job of three, four, five, six people. I mean, it's setting that person up to fail, and it's setting our organization up to fail. You know, the, the community development, community service director position, I mean, I guess my concern is that in the past, when we've had these individuals in these roles, it's real kind of focused on just one area. You know, we used to have a EDA director, and they only did EDA types of things, whereas, you know, their need here is to, to do those things, but also community development types of things. I think that actually the last person we had, that's their title switched from just exclusively being EDA, involved in the EDA, paid out of the EDA, to a community development type person that was involved in other things, but they may not have had that experience. So maybe it was the wrong person that we had to fill that role. But, so, you know, I like the idea of keeping it open in kind of that dual role and kind of refining it based on the applicants. But, you know, I don't know how, you know, we're talking about succession planning and what's gone on the last year and a half. I think we've seen, you know, maybe at some point we need to talk, you know, sooner than later, is, is a role of an assistant city manager appropriate? And, and what roles would that individual fill? Kind of, you know, I'm sure at EDA, community development, those sorts of things, maybe that's a better solution. And again, that's a different type of candidate or different person, different pay raise or pay scale, but, you know, I'm open to, you know, suggestions and discussion. But, you know, what you're proposing here, I'm perfectly comfortable with and supporting, so.
I would agree that, you know, this is definitely a need because you can only do so much. But one area that, and I know we've talked about it, is the Parks and Rec area that I think we really are short on. And if there's a way that one of these positions, you know, can take on more of that role, I'm not, I, I see that, you know, part of it is, but I, I think that our, our residents are crying for some sort of, what do you call it? Programming out there within our parks. I don't know if the schools are up to par with that yet or not. I'm not sure. As we get out of COVID and as we get into, the kids getting out into the public and into the parks and, you know, programming and that type of thing, it'd be nice to have that type of position and also as we look into the future of the community center, too, as part of that discussion.
And I do think a Parks and Recreation person is a huge need based on what I've heard from the community. I just don't have a good funding source for it right now.
So we'll move on unless there's anything else on that. We'll move to the deputy clerk. And if she can leave the building while we talk about her, that'd be great. I'm just kidding. We'll talk about that position. Councilmember Cole?
I support it. I have nothing.
Councilmember what?
Same.
Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, it makes sense, and I'm supportive of it.
And I'm the same, and she's got the, the best smell in her, in her office. She's got one of those, what do you call it? Free breeze, air fresheners, and it's like, oh my gosh. So, and again, I think this is something that, you know, coming out of COVID, coming out of, you know, things that the job duty is more than what, what has been, what, what you signed up for. I think there is more than what, what there is there, so.
And Finance Director Winnick talked about some of his employees and their, and their potential. In this case, I, I, again, In this case, I, I, again, since the deputy clerk can't leave the room, she has to just be embarrassed. You know, I do believe that the individual has a great deal of potential and has identified a lot of future career steps. You know, quite frankly, at an age where a lot of people are comfortable staying put or a place in her career where a lot of people are comfortable staying put, she does have a lot of interest in getting certifications in both city clerk kinds of things and in human resources kinds of things. And so I'm so supportive of that. And, you know, my hope is that as, as the deputy clerk grows professionally, we can always accommodate her, her here so that she doesn't have to move on to practice those skills somewhere else.
Is there more training involved?
Yes.
I'm assuming that.
Well, there's more training involved in future steps. I think to take the step I'm talking about today, again, I'll know more when I talk with a human, I, I've talked to one human resources consultant already. And based on, you know, hour-long conversation, their conclusion was, yeah, this position's under a place too low in the pay scale. And without any changes in training or job description or anything, they, they ought to be, it ought to be higher. But I'll continue to have those conversations with the, with a HR consultant to get this kind of dialed in right and, and get some outside perspective. You know, we're, it gets harder to be objective as you get closer to an organization or the people inside. So to have an outside set of eyes take a look at things too.
And again, all this fits into our 2022.
It does.
So it's a good thing. All right.
So just to continue on, I wanted to just make sure we're kind of on the same page in, in terms of who has authority to do what or what, what my authority of city manager is. The state statutes and city codes, city code make some of our roles for city staffing very clear. It's clear that the council's role is to approve a levy in a budget that includes expenditures on personnel. It's very clear that anything related to the individual filling that position, hiring, supervision, discipline falls under the authority of the city manager. There are a lot of responsibilities though that are really undefined in the state statutes or city code. You know, past practice of the city council is to identify the size and titles of the staff of each department. I would anticipate we'd continue with that practice. On, on the titles in the future, we might give it a little, some of the titles a little more ambiguity. So we have a little more ability to be nimble as hiring needs come up. But we'll talk about that when the time comes. There are some things, you know, I've spoken with a lot of my peers and a couple of mentors about these roles. And I just give a bullet, four bullets here of things which are typically granted to a city manager. And I wanted to make sure that, that those are roles you feel comfortable in me fulfilling. One is drafting and editing the responsibilities contained within a position's job description. Two would be filling an approved position with a lower graded position if the situation warrants or in order to give an almost qualified employee a chance to grow into the approved position. That last piece is something I really believe in, is allowing employees an opportunity to grow. A lot of times if we do have a position that's a G whatever, you know, say it's a G10, if we can find a qualified G8 person that can come in and learn the position there and grow into it, that just, in my experience, works out really well. Three, the designation of working out of class where appropriate or required by labor contracts. Most of our labor contracts discuss this. I, I, they might all, but at least three out of the five do that if a person's doing the responsibilities of a higher position, that they should be recognized for that, at least on a temporary basis. And it, it doesn't say this in here, but the nature of working out of class is that it's meant to be temporary, typically a year or less. And so you would either have to address it in a budget, make it permanent, or find some other way of reducing that employee's responsibilities to make sure that you're not asking them to do more than you're paying them to do. And then finally, the hiring of temporary employees or contract employees, as long as it's within my spending authority, which is currently $25,000. So if these are roles you feel comfortable in me having, that kind of dictates what next steps are.
Do you still do job reviews? I mean, are we doing those? Is it, is this?
No.
Part of that or?
We have not been. In the organization, one of the, we've talked about that department directors meeting. One of the long-term employees indicated that he believes maybe he's had one in 20 years. And I think there are varying opinions on performance evaluations, whatever you want to call them. I have my personal opinion. I, I think that they're a good tool when they're done right. If it's something an employee dreads, if it's like, oh my gosh, my annual review's coming up. This is the worst day of the year, then one of two things is happening. Either you're not doing performance evaluations the right way or there have been unaddressed problems for the prior 364 days that should have been addressed along the way. And so my goal would be to make sure, A, if there are performance or discipline issues, that they're addressed when they happen and not at the performance evaluation. And that B, a performance evaluation is a positive tool for the, for both people involved. When I do performance evaluations for my employees in the past, it's a, it's a two-way thing. They evaluate me as a supervisor. I evaluate them. And it's, it's not really about them. It's about the position, whether they have the tools that they need, the resources that they need to do their job, what's going well, what's not going well. So I think what we agreed to as department directors as a starting point is in 2022 exempt employees, and there are only eight exempt employees in the organization, we'll be doing an annual review and then kind of getting back together and talking about how those reviews went, whether we thought that it was a good tool, how we could do it differently so that we, I want all the department directors to feel like they're good tools that they can get behind. And so, you know, it's not a democracy, but I, I would, I hope we can get to where everybody's on the same page and I think we can.
I think a job review is different from a, like a one-year, two-year, three-year employee.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're talking about the job, maybe I took us on a different road than you had meant to go down. Like the job description, reviewing that on a regular basis.
Similar, yep.
Yeah, and I believe that a major evaluation was done in North St. Paul, somewhere in the neighborhood of 2017, where they went through and looked at job descriptions, went through and looked at people's places in the pay scale, made some adjustments. We do have, we're an unusual organization in that we have like 55 full-time employees, only three of whom are not represented by a union. The unions do a pretty good job of letting us know when their employees aren't being recognized for the work that they're doing. And so at least that direction, if we're under, under recognizing what an employee's doing in terms of their job description, we hear about it. In terms of systematically going through, like I said, the last time that happened was 2017. That can be an expensive process. So at some point in time, I can get a, an idea of what the expense is and, and we can get on a schedule, maybe to do it not as a, an entire organization all in one year, but to have it rolling where each department goes once a year. And every five years, then every department gets looked at.
I think we did just talked about two different things here.
Yep.
So I was talking.
We did.
First, the first one, I'm, still was on that one. Just that, you know, someone, a new person coming in, you know, a one-year review, you know, is different than someone like Ron who's been here, what, 40 years, 50 years? I think that it's, it's a little different type of review because they've been here for so long. And someone new coming in.
I think.
Needs more of a in-depth review.
100% agree that it's different. I, personally, I believe they're both important. I would like to sit down with Ron and talk about what's, what's working great for him, how I can help him better, all of those things. So I think all of the above is the answer.
Yep. Councilmember Thorson.
Yeah, I, you know, I respect your opinion on that. My personal opinion on these, you know, whether you call them performance reviews or annual reviews or whatever is that they've never happened here and they need to happen. And the reason why I say that is because in the last two years, maybe even going back three years, we've had several employees that have left, that have came forward with a lawsuit. And, you know, we could talk about not the specifics, but the fact that it happened. And some of the things were that it was difficult to proceed with a lawsuit because there was nothing in the file about, you know, anything in the past, even though there potentially were issues, but they were not documented, you know? And I think you shared an example of the business association that, you know, you walked around half the day with spinach in your teeth and no one told you. And, you know, when you have spinach in your teeth, you want someone to say something. It, this isn't in a, to me, I don't look at it as, well, look, you know, I'm the boss here. Everyone answers to me and every year we have a performance evaluation. I'm going to tell you everything you're doing wrong. That's not it at all. But if you have an employee who's got spinach in your teeth, someone needs to say something. And if that employee is purposely putting the spinach in their teeth, you need to tell them to stop and you need to document it that, you know, we told him that this is an acceptable behavior. And then that follows along where if in the future it progresses to a termination and we've seen it can happen, they turn around and sue. And then we're left with, well, we've got no case here because even though this employee was doing these things, we haven't documented it. So to me, it seems like it's just more of a function of necessity and that, you know, I think naturally people are just going to be afraid of a performance evaluation anyway. But like you say, you can run it any way you want. It shouldn't be a negative thing. It should be a positive thing. And that it's just as simple as, you know, going over your strengths and weaknesses and things you can work on and, you know, and like you say, it's, it's, you do treat an employee who's been here for one, two, three years. Maybe you treat everyone the same, but you treat the questioning or their evaluation criteria a little differently than someone who's been here for 40 years. But maybe it's some of that stuff that they've been here for so long, they're not, they're not doing the little things again. They just need a friendly reminder. So that's where I see these things as a valuable tool. And that's something that traditionally has not gone on here for whatever reason that needs to, needs to start and we'll just trust your judgment on how you're going to implement that.
Well, thank you. And my goal is that we're going to have, let's say we have 60 FTEs here, that we're going to have 60 absolutely awesome employees. And I believe that right now to be the case. And when we have annual talks with employees to tell them how awesome they are, my goal is that they're going to say, can we do this monthly? And that's where I'd like to get to and we'll see.
So everybody kind of agree with the, the approvals for and implementation of personal changes for the city manager? Councilmember Cole, Wong.
Yes.
Thorson. Okay. And from that, I think we're on our next topic or unless?
Well, I'll just go through the recommended action really quick. You know, if you're okay with my role, we can implement the finance department reorganization tomorrow morning, as far as I know, or the next pay period, because all of those things fall within what, what we've agreed kind of as the city manager role. And then we'll come back as soon as possible, probably in the first meeting in April. I can't see why it wouldn't be to amend the 2021 budget. It's, it's going to be a short staff report to include kind of this augmented position. 2022, thank you, budget, the current year budget for this. And then I'm going to bring aboard a consultant to help us look at a couple of existing positions and determine whether they're appropriately placed in the pay scale. And then at the same time, or as we come back with the police position or maybe two weeks later, depending on the timing, I'll come back with a revision to the 2022 budget if needed for the community development director to add that position in. And then we'll get, we'll get rock and rolling on advertising.
And you need to talk to Ron sooner than later.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, thank you for your support on this.
And then?
The next item, I think we're going to ask city engineer Dolly to walk us through.
Welcome, Morgan.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I think it's appropriate.
I was with one of your colleagues the other day at the league of, or not the, the regional of mayors. You had, we had Eric there was talking.
He did a presentation.
And he did a presentation.
Hopefully he did an okay job.
Did a good job.
Okay, good. So this item before you at the workshop level here, and I think it's appropriate that I'm sitting at Finance Director Winnick's table. It's not necessarily a joint item. I certainly will be presenting it, but it does relate to things that, that he is looking at with respect to preparing for bonding for capital improvement projects. And this is a good opportunity for staff to, because this is a comprehensive year with multiple projects. Normally we would report back to council as we're going out for bids, for example. Here's the latest cost estimate or here are the bids and they were good bids, et cetera. We've got multiple projects with multiple moving pieces. So this is a good, important time to take a look at the entire picture. There's some ups, there's some downs. I'll explain that and certainly hopefully we have a little bit of time for questions, maybe some direction from council, maybe Dan's got something to add. We didn't rehearse this, so. But what I would like to point your attention to would be the table that I included in the packet here. It's just very simple. This is an internal tool that Dan and I have been using in Public Works as well to just kind of track the different funding categories, knowing that we've got CIP or streets dollars that would, that impact the general levy. We've got other enterprise funds such as sanitary sewer, water, surface water, utility funds, which pay for portions of projects. We also, on this particular year, have some project costs that are incurred that are specific to street maintenance. So Public Works's maintenance overlay budget is something that's being brought to bear here. And as you may recall, last time we discussed this series of 2022 capital improvements, that was about September, October timeframe. We were looking at CIP estimates, which are more high-level estimates. We're looking at a map of the whole city. We're measuring these projects on the basis of length and width and approximate general costs, knowing what at a high level we're looking at with respect to streets and utilities. And sometimes we try to build in contingencies or additional amounts to take into account the fact that we don't know all the information at that time. But we, as we do dig into things, we do find some additional information. Or sometimes there's outside influences that change things, which I'll get into it. So the first item that I'll point out is certainly a positive outcome. And that is that for the first project and that, that's the general project that we're calling 2022 Street and Utility Improvement Project, we did take bids on that. That is actually in front of the council on the regular agenda tonight here for consideration of a ward of contract. But the bids did come in favorably. And basically, if you look at the second to last column in the table, that is, it's labeled Delta from CIP. So that's kind of trying to track on what has changed since last fall. That we're about 10% to the, to the green, I guess, in terms of what we are projecting. And that is what we strive to do, right? We strive to have our estimates be conservative such that when we do take bids, hopefully if the market cooperates with us, the numbers are going down. That's the idea. Now, if you keep moving down in the column there, the next project that is identified is the cooperative venture with the city of Maplewood where they're doing most of their project. And we're going to be participating just on Ariel Street there, which is jointly road, jointly owned road between North St. Paul and Maplewood. As you may recall, as a past discussion regarding potential pedestrian facilities on that street, council direction was to consider an alternate. So it's not for sure that the council has accepted that alternate or has directed that that sidewalk be constructed, right? But I've included that on as an, as an additional potential. But I've included that on as an, as an additional potential cost, I guess, for future consideration. So that is certainly part of the overall puzzle or equation that we're trying to track on here. I think that the next one down is probably the most impactful. The next one down is the Seventh Avenue project. And so that is basically from where the Seventh Avenue Improvements Project left off in 2020, and then moving west to First Street, which is approximately where the other project left off, so in effect, filling that gap with a street reconstruction of concrete pavement on Seventh Avenue. But also, you know, when the original map was kind of delineated with some past staff, we had included, or it would, the idea was to include part of Fourth Avenue between Helen Street and Margaret, and part of the alleyway there too as well. And so as you can see, it's a fairly substantial increase in our estimate based on really diving in and trying to pull at all of the things that are underground there, frankly. One driver on that cost increase is concrete pavement. So the pavement on Seventh Avenue has certainly increased in price in terms of more recent cost estimates or what we're seeing in the market right now than in the past. We've also included that portion of Margaret Street where the 2020 project left off mid-block, and we've brought that concrete all the way down to the intersection of Fourth and Margaret in this current estimate. We also have a nineteen sixties eighty-eight inch arch corrugated metal culvert, which has never been maintained, which, again, high-level estimate versus digging into the details, these are the things that we find out. And that is a very expensive, I mean, that's a pipe that you can almost drive through, you could certainly walk through it, but it's a very big pipe that conveys a large portion of stormwater under Seventh Avenue, and it's in Helen Street, so that is a big driver of cost. As I mentioned in the notes on the table there, you know, this is a, it was started out as a big scope, that scope can be reduced, there's options out there, it's not too late to consider those. It also says something about value, I value options with respect to rehab the storm sewer rather than reconstruct. Since this was written, I've been talking to Public Works about it, we're probably a little uncomfortable with the risk that even if the, that corrugated metal pipe was rehabbed, since it's nineteen sixties vintage, there's very likely holes in that pipe that have just rusted through. So if we were to do that, that might add a little more risk to the city than staff might be comfortable with. But again, by reducing scope, you know, it may be possible to reduce this down by a million dollars potentially, but, you know, that's, we're not saying that we have to do that, but again, that's an, an alternative that is out there, certainly for consideration. And then the next big one is something that's outside forces out of our control to a certain extent. So that, that project is the McKnight Water Main, so we talked about in advance of Ramsey County overlaying McKnight Road, taking care of the city's water main, which lies underneath the county road, which has been prone to breaks. And as you can see in the map, which is also in the packet, and the original CIP based on past conversations with Ramsey County staff, we had identified that stretch of road on McKnight from Beam all the way up to County Road D, which is actually mostly, if not all, in the city of Maplewood, but as you know, the city of North St. Paul does supply portions of maple wood with drinking water, and so that is our water main there. So that was the original CIP estimate. So since then, and certainly it's their right to do so, but Ramsey County has expanded the scope of their overlay project to be from County Road D on the north end all the way down to Eleventh Avenue. So that essentially doubles the length of their overlay project. And if the city were to take care of all the water main under that section, that certainly doubles or, or more than doubles, just because it's a little bit longer than half the length of the cost of that project. So that's certainly a changing factor. Now Ramsey County has, they listened to our request previously by pushing the overlay back, they were originally going to do that in 2022, they said they would push it back to 2023, they would probably be open to hearing from the city if we wanted to push it back, back further. But bottom line, in talking to Public Works, that section from Eleventh Avenue north to Beam Avenue is actually worse with respect to past history of water main breaks and of greater concern. So if we were to, for example, just take care of the part that we were originally taking care of on the north end from Beam to County Road D, and, you know, decided we wanted to live with the rest, risk, and just leave that section from Eleventh to Beam as is, and the county overlaid the road, public works staff and myself feel that very likely we would certainly experience some water main breaks there and have to dig up the county road to fix them, which would not be ideal after the county's investment in overlaying that, that roadway pavement. So those are the major, the other changes are relatively minor, but it is a significant number. We've separated that out so that Dan can see what those look like with respect to the different funding sources. Dan has also had meetings with the bonding consultant, I haven't been a part of those, so there may be some information there. But certainly with that, we have certainly ample time for questions, so I'll stand for any questions council might have at this time.
So that column, Delta for CIP, that's the increase of the projects?
Yeah, it, so it's showing a.
Two point seven.
An aggregate increase, we, we did have some decreases, but you add it all together, it's an aggregate increase, correct.
If we were to do all the projects, that's the increase from what was presented before?
Correct, included in the fall of 2021 CIP estimate.
Okay. Any questions for Morgan, Councilmember Cole?
Maybe not so much questions as clarification. The sidewalk along Ariel, I believe you said you were bidding out, did we agree on what to do with Thirteenth? Did we agree to have that bid out as we, as a major east-west?
I think we had there as an alternative.
The, so the overlay of Thirteenth is actually included in the maintenance overlay, if I remember correctly.
But it was, we had a whole lot of sidewalk conversations one night, and I've just tried to, I've just tried to remember what, what we had talked about.
So what I have right now is no, because that was an overlay and not something that we're kind of doing a little bit more on, moving the curb or getting into the curb line, for example, no pedestrian facilities on Thirteenth at this time.
Okay. I mean, does it hurt to ask for bids? Or the bids already gone out? And if, and if I, if I'm a sole one up here, then that's, then that's fine, we can move on.
So it's an important, so bids have gone out.
Okay.
The, the, that contract is in front of the council for a ward. It's certainly something that staff can continue to look at to see if there's a cost-effective way to retrofit that in.
And then same with.
That's just an overlay.
On Thirteenth, right.
But nothing will be done for another twenty years, so I don't necessarily, I'm not necessarily aligned with the city's, city's direction on, you know, when, when we have conversations on sidewalks or not, that's, that's why I'm asking, because it'll be, it could be another twenty to thirty years before anything is done on that stretch. So that's what's why I wanted to bring it up now. Also, same question exists on Seventh. I close my eyes and I can't remember what it looks like up there. Is there, sidewalk runs all, all the way on one side, correct?
On Seventh Avenue?
Yep.
In, in the section that we're talking about with this project? It's on both sides.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
I have nothing, thanks.
Councilmember Thorson?
Well, you know, I, we've just got ourselves in such a bad spot right now from deferring this stuff for so long, and I'm talking decades, I mean, this should have been adopted in the early seventies, working our way towards this, but we are where we are. But when I hear, you know, we're trying to coordinate with the county to, to minimize the impacts of a McKnight Road because of the water mains, and, you know, it's just, meanwhile, that road continues to get worse, right? And, and so if, if we can only do one section and they redo the whole road and it pushes the water mains back farther, they're still going to blow up the road, we're still going to have to tear up the road, so it's kind of, we're chasing our tail. And, you know, sidewalks are always going to be an issue, especially when there's non-existing sidewalks. You know, to me, it's, we just got to look at it as a, you know, a case-by-case basis, does it make sense? Does it make sense to put a sidewalk in a cul-de-sac? No. But I'm sure there are people that would argue that it would benefit the neighborhood and that, you know, they would want to see it. Does it make sense to put sidewalks on main arterial roads where there's a lot of traffic and a lot of pedestrian traffic? Yes, absolutely. But, you know, I think it's just important we stick to these plans and, you know, deferring projects for things like, you know, like sidewalks, to me, it's just counterproductive and, and it's just going to compound the issue because if, if, if a road is to the point where it needs to be replaced, but the hangup is, is a sidewalk, and we just move on to the next area, and that just continues to get worse, I mean, worst-case scenario, you can redo the road and people can walk on the road absent of a sidewalk, even though perhaps in twenty years, the road will be rescheduled for a fully overlay, and that is when accommodations will be made for a sidewalk.
Are you talking about Ariel or?
Well, just, you know, this Thirteenth Avenue, I mean, I get it, it's, it's an overlay, and I understand why the sidewalks weren't in there. And if, you know, Councilmember Cole, and he's talked to constituents that have expressed interest in a sidewalk, I'm not against bringing that in, but, you know, we're looking at these costs and they pile up quick, and, you know, I'm looking at it from the bigger picture, what's more important that, you know, Thirteenth Avenue between McKnight and Ariel, I would argue is not heavily, there's not a lot of traffic other than localized residents going to and from compared to McKnight Road, you know, it's a main arterial road, there's all sorts of traffic. If we're, if we're trying to decide where do we allocate our resources between fixing a water main and putting in a sidewalk in a non-arterial road, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to side with the water main all day, it just makes sense. But, you know, not, that's putting us in a position to have to prioritize something like a water main versus a sidewalk, and, you know, certainly arguments can be made either way, but, you know, from what I'm looking at here, what you guys are proposing, I mean, I, my concern is just when I hear, you know, when the county's ready to redo like a stretch of McKnight, that's got to be a pretty big area, right? Are they talking just in North St. Paul, or is it spanning all through North St. Paul into Maplewood? And then if we're asking them to hold off on that because we've got plans to do more water main repair, but we can't afford it, you know, what I'm saying is like, we're now negatively impacting all sorts of people that live on McKnight, that travel on McKnight, even though ideally we would just redo all the water main, right? But we can't do that, we have to do it in parts and pieces. So we can't avoid the, this issue of the county wants to do a, a deal and we want to try to do what's best, but, you know, because we're just pushing something off and we can't predict water main breaks, but it sounds like, from what I'm hearing you explain, if, if we continue to push this off in respect to, to preserve that overlay that they're doing, we're, it's just, we're just moving it down the road farther, right? Does that make sense? So, I mean, I, I guess I'm not supportive of defer, you know, asking the county to delay a road project that they have, you know, especially that it's going to cost more money and, you know, I don't know what, there's no, there's no good solution to this, right? We can't replace all the water main break in one false swoop, we have to kind of focus on the worst areas and hope for the best.
Councilmember Thorson, we've had multiple pretty bad water main breaks on McKnight, and, I mean, they've been some of the worst ones that I, since I've been here, where it drains a water tower like in a half hour. So, you know, when the, they, they extended this, you know, on.
Lot of water.
That, it is a lot of water, like, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand gallons in a half hour, so. You know, doubling the, the water main on here is something that I feel that, you know, when they're doing it, that we kind of have to do. And also, when we have those breaks on a county road, how we deal with them versus our regular roads, we have to, you know, we dig them, we fix them, they're in the winter time normally, we have to concrete them in for the winter, then we have to go back, dig them back out, dig out that concrete, and then there's a, there's a road spec that we have to build that road back to. So the, these water main breaks get fairly expensive when, when they're on a county road. So when there's an opportunity like this to do that, or when they're doing that, I think it's important that we do focus on that, you know, versus other things. And I know that, like you said, there's needs for lots of different things that, you know, need to be done, but something like this, you know, I feel that it's important, and it's in the best interest of the city, I think, in the long run, and the money spent for it.
Yeah, and just to clarify, that's right, I'm fully supportive of focusing on the water main repair and allowing the county to redo the road, you know, sooner rather than continue to delay that, because I think that is having the largest impact on the greatest amount of people versus, you know, I think we kind of can get sidetracked on, you know, sidewalk discussion and, and things like that, so.
Am I hearing the county is going to be doing this project, so we have the opportunity to replace that? So it's already going to be done?
It's in their five-year CIP.
So as they do it, then we would be able to replace, is that what?
Yes.
Or are we talking?
So the, so the timing is, so what Ramsey County does for these paper preservation projects that they do every year on an annual basis is they let and award a contract, to a contractor to do several streets, highways, sorry, county highways throughout the county, and they've ident, you know, they have a, similar to how we identify and prioritize different streets, they have their own map and it's scheduled out. And so they, one of their segments for 2023 is this from Eleventh Avenue up to County Road D, which is in Maplewood, so a big chunk of this is outside of North St. Paul, but our, North St. Paul water main is under that section of McKnight, even as a county road in, in Maplewood. And so the, the timing is that we would, we would award our water main project this summer, we would get a contractor out there this late summer and fall, and they'd do as much as they could this year. I mean, if they were able to get it all done in one year, that would be great, although it's very likely that they would have to come back to finish this, the water main in the first part of 2023, and then Ramsey County has indicated that they would coordinate with us if we had some work in 2023, such that the city water main work would finish, and then because their contractor is actually going all through the whole county, doing their overlay work through the whole summer, when they get to McKnight, that would be scheduled a little bit later in the summer, such that they'd be doing their overlay work after we were already done and out of there with our water main stuff.
So my concern was that he had mentioned that they were already proposing to do this project, the road, I'm, I'm assuming it's a mill and overlay, because if it was a full reconstruction, it would be no issue, they would just say, hey, we're opening up the road, get in here, now's the time to do it. I mean, I guess we could say no, and we could say, well, we don't have the money to do it, but that would be ridiculous thing to do. But, so my concern was that if we, you know, if we're continuing to ask like the county to, to delay this project because we've reprioritized, which we haven't done, but if we do shift from what we have in plan here, that's where my concern is that, well, now we're asking them to change their plans because for whatever reasons, we've changed ours, and in the meantime, we're still going to have water main breaks, so even though they put that new road down, we're still going to have to tear into it, so it's just not really accomplishing anything by asking them to defer it. But I agree with the approach that if we can coordinate it and get it done, great.
I wasn't recommending that we delay it, but just putting all the options out there.
Okay.
But you're correct, if any capital expenditure, especially with the way prices are going, they're not getting any cheaper, so, you know, doing something later is going to cost more dollars than doing it.
Morgan, you said Eleventh to County Road D, so I'm seeing.
County Road D, correct.
So this blue line, this arrow that's going straight up, is that on McKnight then?
Yes.
So Eleventh.
So the blue line is what we had in the CIP, that's where we started.
Yep.
Now, what they're planning on doing.
Is going all the way up to.
Is starting at Eleventh, which is significantly.
Starting on Eleventh, got it, got it, got it.
And then going north to County Road D, which is County Road D, if you, I don't have a map to show it, but it's right before you get to 694.
And then you wanna know whether or not we wanna use that alternate too for the sidewalk? That's, that's in here?
Uh, I don't know that we're asking for direction on, on this, well, I guess if the 13th Avenue, that would be a new direction.
That'd be a new direction.
Certainly I'll take that direction if the council wants to have us, even though the contract's been awarded, we can look at options and see if there's, like I said, I think the way I would put it is, is there a cost-effective way? Uh, maybe, maybe it doesn't even have to be a sidewalk. Is there a pedestrian shoulder? Or is there something that can be looked at that could be considered a pedestrian facility on that road?
So the alternate in here for Ariel Street for the sidewalk? We're not-
That, that direction's already been given to staff. Maplewood's, uh, bids will be back in April and so-
Got it.
At that time, I'll have some prices to present to council and council will make the decision on the sidewalk at that time.
Okay. And I'm assuming 13th Avenue, you know, the sidewalk, it's a pond or it's a walking, potentially could be a walking, uh, circle eventually. You know, so that is potentially, uh, I think people do use that. I see a, on the grass there, you see a path on the grass that people use, so. Any new direction tonight on that or should we?
Well, just to kinda give you a little bit more information, so we're starting to get prepared to get ready to bond for the, for the projects. So I love the discussion. Um, I think we're all in favor that we wanna continue with this scope. Um, we're looking at about a $12 million. So the first step that we have to do is we have to publish a notice for a public hearing. Um, our, uh, notice will go out Friday, um, and we'll have a public hearing on April 5th at 6:30. Um, we are gonna go out right now for the full $12 million, um, for bonding. That, that'll set the maximum limit that we can bond for. We certainly can come down. Um, part of that April 5th, um, hearing will also give some, some different looks at options of, of, uh, we do have some money. We've got the, the ERPA funds. We also have our, um, we have our own maintenance, um, street maintenance funds that were approved through the CIP. So we'll show what that cost is going to be, um, in comparison to what we were looking at before. So we'll have that prepared on that April 5th. But I am, um, very excited to hear that, that we wanna keep moving forward, um, you know, uh, you know, in spite of, of the increases in, in the costs and we just hope that, um, that the bids come in good. I mean, I think we're timing-wise, two different things. Um, Morgan said it, um, inflation is hitting us, costs are gonna continue to go up. We also, from a timing, um, point of view, um, we got the feds looking at, uh, continuously, um, raising interest rates.
Rates are going up.
We gotta get out there and, and take these good, um, bond rates that are out there right now, so we, very pleased.
Any other questions then for, uh, Morgan? Matt, City Manager, start.
I don't have anything more for the workshop.
Okay. So at this time, I just want to mention to the council that, uh, I'm gonna formally, uh, say that I'm not gonna be running for mayor for this, uh, upcoming election. So just let everybody know that if you have candidates or know anybody that, uh, needs or would like to run for city council or mayor, but I wanna make that announcement tonight formally to, uh, to the council. So, that's it. At this time, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we'll start the meeting now. No, let's take a, uh, two-minute, two, three-minute break. Pledge allegiance. For the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Jenny, if you can take the roll.
Councilmember Thorson?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Mayor Furlong?
Here.
And Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Peterson is absent.
He's absent.
Uh, quorum is present at this time. A motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the motion carries. We have no presentations. Uh, but I would like to just take a moment to, uh, uh, recognize what's going on in the world today, uh, with, what's happening in U- Ukraine and, you know, think about, uh, you know, they talk about their government, you know, their mayors, their citizens and everything. And I just, I'd like to take a moment of silence of just a few seconds in regards to, uh, show, you know, that Ukraine, that we, we do care and we do wanna say some good words to them and, and maybe say a prayer for them, for, for all the citizens and, and for the, for the whole country there. So if we could take a couple of seconds. Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, at this time, the consent agenda, and I'll turn over to City Manager Stark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The consent agenda contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent agenda has been approved, the individual items have also been approved and no further action is necessary. However, any city council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Uh, tonight's consent agenda is the following items. A, the March 1st, 2022 regular meeting minutes. B, the March 1st, 2022 workshop meeting minutes. Item C, general claims in the amount of $299,402.85. D, HRA claims in the amount of $11,032.71. E, the building permit report for February. F, a resolution approving acceptance of donations received February of 2022. G, approve a resolution re-establishing the North St. Paul voting precincts and polling places. H, well-ceiling program authorization. I, approve resolution supporting funding for planning and design for a separated interchange at the intersection of Trunk Highway 36 and Highway 120. J, uh, winter parking ordinance, temporary exemption from 1:00 AM to 7:00 AM on March 18th, uh, to accommodate the, uh, St. Patrick's Day holiday and to encourage people to leave their car parked instead of driving home after being out and imbibing. Item K, change order number three to the 2020 Street and Utility Improvement Project. Item L, authorize advertisement for bids for the 7th Avenue Street and Utility Improvements Project CP 22-01. M, Anchor Block Commons final BMP authorization, uh, and solicitation for quotes. Item N, resolution supporting legislative efforts to ensure a sustainable, safe, and reliable water supply. And that concludes tonight's consent agenda.
At this time, if there's any council member who'd like to pull an item, they can do so at this time. If not, motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. At this time, the meeting's open to the public and the comments will, will be limited to three minutes. And, uh, well, the city council may ask clarifying, clarifying questions of the speaker, no formal action by the city council or discussion will be held on these items. So we do have one and John Schmal. Welcome, John.
Evening, Mayor, and Council. And on the subject of, uh, Ukraine, I was wondering what my parents would be thinking in 1939. Anyway, on that note, um, uh, the last council meeting, there were two people in the audience that I sat behind and, uh, they seemed to be discussing something. I'm not sure what it was, but the, the meeting was over and they were unhappy because their subject that they thought was going to be brought up, which happened to be the proceedings of the Planning Commission on the 3rd of February, dealing with, well, uh, something that, uh, had to do with the house on Eldridge, and it's close to your area. Uh, but they were there because they thought the council was going to be taking up the next step of the turn-down of the plan by the applicant to do something. Uh, I forget now what it was. Uh, their, uh, decision to come here to put it, have input, because they were told at the end of the Planning Commission meeting, and I heard it by, uh, listening to it online, uh, was that there would be a decision on what the Planning Commission had come up with and whether they were gonna approve it, the council, or not. And it wasn't on the agenda. So they were a little unhappy about that and, uh, I heard them express that particular position. And, uh, there, there was no reason why it never came up. Nothing was expressed as to why it didn't come up. So, um, uh, I talked to them later on and, uh, they were unhappy. And the next day, I happened to be talking to Don Benick and he asked me, wha-, uh, what happened on this subject? And I said, Don, how did you know it was gonna be at the council? And he said, well, we got the 300-foot letter. And the 300-foot letter, which says people in that area, uh, this is how it's gonna go down. February 3rd, Planning Commission, on one, or 3-1, um, March 1st, council. I said, how did you, that's how, oh, you found out? You had a letter? Yeah, everybody in the 300-foot got that letter, so they thought this is the way it goes. And it didn't go. So I don't know how you can get to people who are gonna show up and think that something's gonna happen and let them know, hey, it's, it's not gonna happen. They, maybe they put the same piece of paper in with address and phone number and if they were the people who got up and said, hey, I'd like to make a comment.
I think I get your point.
Yes.
And I, oh, I think-
Something has to be done like that. Uh, a small point, uh, Don said to me, I don't get minutes anymore in the mail. So maybe a decision has been made, you know, the guy's been receiving them, you know, for a hundred years.
Now you assume Don will contact the city if he's-
Well, he, he's kinda slowed down, Mayor.
Oh, but it's-
And so I felt, and I bring this up.
Okay.
You know, you can call, say, you know, it's not your place to do it, fine, but I will do things like this when someone says it to me. Last item is, at the end of the meeting on the 1st, a piece of paper was handed out with possible agenda items for the workshop. Wasn't made available to the public, all the members got it, and I looked at everything that was in paperwork here, that it may, it might have shown up now in the minutes or some, something like that. It didn't. So how do I get a copy?
I don't know if that's, that's just potential workshop, uh, City Manager. And I, and I hate to respond to it, but-
Yeah.
These are just potential workshops that are, they're not in stone yet.
Yep.
So I hate to get that out and we don't do that, we don't follow that, because those could change at any time.
Yeah, a couple of things. One is, as I, as you mentioned, they were meant to be placeholders for council to know, um, what nights we're looking at having workshops. I, I had extra copies on the, my table here for the public, so I apologize if I didn't. Uh, I thought that I had communicated that at the meeting. If I didn't, that's my fault, so I apologize. The intention was that they were there for the taking. Um, I can tell you it's already changed and it's gonna be changing several times and-
So it's potential, it's potential workshop.
There was one.
Yeah, well, but it kind of, it seems like it's official, you know, when it gets handed out, and it wasn't adjourned, it was a part of the process, so, anyway.
I wasn't here.
Um, and then with regards, and, uh, to the item from the Planning Commission, um, the Planning Commission acts on, on applications and so, uh, it's kind of a reactive body in that way. When an application is made, uh, the Planning Commission hears it and it moves its way up to the city council. When an applicant withdraws, um, that's something that neither the Planning Commission or city council has any control over. I believe that was the case, that in this, uh, instance, the applicant withdrew their, um, application between the Planning Commission hearing it and the city council hearing it. I, I spoke with the family that was here, the couple that was here. I felt horrible that they spent, um, time away, that they would've maybe planned on spending differently and, um, you know, so anybody out there listening, if you ever are coming for an agenda item, things do change. Um, always try to check the, uh, city's website for agenda items would be the best way to do that.
Thank you. Uh, anybody on Zoom? Nothing? So at this time, uh, there's no public hearings, city business and action items, and I'll turn it over to City Manager. I'll turn it over to Morgan.
I'm sorry. Yep. I think we can just turn this over to Morgan. It's receiving and awarding, uh, receiving bids and awarding contracts for the 2022 Street and Utility Improvement Projects.
Welcome, Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, so this item is presenting the bids received, um, for the aforementioned project, the 2022 Street and Utility Improvement Project. Um, just a summary of the areas that are included in that project, uh, for a reminder, we're talking about improvements to the downtown surface parking- about improvements to the downtown surface parking lot adjacent to Sixth Avenue, south of Seventh Avenue, including portions of Sixth Avenue and Charles Street with a maintenance overlay. We're also talking about, it's Area 2, which is a slightly different part of town, 10th Avenue East, Third Street North, and Second Street North, so that's over by the high school. And then Area 3 would include Flanders Road, 13th Avenue, and Spirit Hills Lane, and 14th Avenue, so that's adjacent to Ariel on the west part of town, north of Highway 36. So basically, the improvements contemplated in this project, as we've talked about before, are street reconstruction or street overlay, so pavement rehabilitation, curb and gutter in some areas, water main replacement, storm sewer, some lighting, street lighting within the parking lot, as we've discussed before, landscaping and other pertinent work. Nine bids were received, so it was very competitively bid project, with the bids ranging from just over $2 million to the low of $1.57 million. And the attached letter of recommendation, after the bids were tabulated for mathematical accuracy, recommends awarding of a contract to Batuminus Roadways, which is, they provided a grand total bid of $1,578,524.63. So if the contract is awarded, we expect a start of construction sometime in May, with more details on that to be forthcoming with the public, certainly, with project communications having already started with a virtual neighborhood open house earlier in the year. But we'll continue to communicate with residents that are adjacent to this project area as things move forward with more detail on start and progression of the work. But the recommendation from staff is to award a contract by resolution, which is included in your packet, for award of the contract for the 2022 Street and Utility Improvements Project to Batuminus Roadways in that amount that I mentioned previously, approximately $1.578 million. With that, I'll stand for any questions the council might have before considering the resolution.
Any questions for Morgan? Councilmember Thorson?
Don.
Nope.
Readable.
How do the, I mean, gas prices are going up so much. Are, these are guaranteed now for a line?
Through contract completion, which I don't have the exact date in me, in front of me, but I believe that's going to be mid-year next year. So, and I believe we took these bids before the wars started in Ukraine, and which is impactful on the oil market right now. So these prices were about what we expected them to be for the 2000, for oil and for asphalt paving prices, about what we expected them to be for the 2022 season, maybe a little bit lower than what we estimated. Our estimate was kind of right in the middle of that range of bids that we received. But yes, potentially, like, I do have information on seal coating oil, which is not the same as asphalt paving, but prices are very volatile and expected to increase in that market. As of last Friday, we had an email update from different suppliers. So yes, oil is certainly going to be a wild card item for costs in 2022.
So the motion is a resolution accepting bids and awarding a construction contract for the 2022 Street and Utility Improvement Projects, City Projects Number 22-02, 04, and 03. And that's awarding Batuminus Roadways, Inc., correct? Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. City manager Stark.
City manager's report, I only have a couple of things. The aforementioned tentative workshop schedule has already been upended. We had discussed having a presentation of the park improvement plan and an initial discussion of the range of solutions for the community center at the next city council meeting workshop on April 5th. Due to some conflicting scheduling, we are going to push that off likely to April 19th. I suspect we will have a workshop on April 5th. I don't know what the topic would be at this point in time. If there was something pressing that people were looking for, feel free to shoot me an email or give me a call. Otherwise, we'll go back to the, kind of our game plan from the retreat on some things that needed to be discussed and see if there's something that we can move in there. And secondly, we have a city council commission retreat planned for, I believe this is next Thursday, the 24th at 5:00 p.m. That would be in, I think we're going to be holding it here in this room, but with a different, you folks won't be sitting at the dais, it will be kind of in a group together.
Circle?
Yeah. Square tables. And then it's my intention, unless I hear to the contrary, to start putting the council dais seating back to its pre-COVID arrangement. You know, if there are concerns in the future about variance or increase in caseloads, we probably get spread out again. But I think people feel comfortable getting back to the seating arrangement that we used to have.
You okay with that?
Do we have to sit by Soren?
[laughing]
Oh, is that my mic on? Sorry.
They said they don't want.
[laughing] I know I am.
And that's all I have.
And is that your reports sent too? Okay. Reports of council and commissions and committees, Councilmember Cole?
We had a fantastic EDA meeting, as well as a joint EDA, Planning Commission, and council discussion to talk about proposed development at the Lilly site. I'm going to pass and let Mayor discuss that. It was exciting. There was a lot of things going on.
You want me to talk about it right now?
No.
Talk about it right now.
When it's your turn.
You know, so we had, you know, first time that we've had that, and it's recommended by city manager Stark in regards to having the Planning Commission, the EDA, and the council, you know, to talk about the Lilly Building. And we saw the two developers that came, and they each presented their plans, and I thought it was a well-received meeting. I think each developer got input from us, and we got input from them. And as we move forward, I think it was a good, I guess, a good, what do you call it, format to potentially hear developments that all of us could hear at once, rather than come back to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission would have questions, and the EDA would have questions. We were all on board. Council was here. So I thought it was a very good meeting. If you want to add to that, you can.
No.
Get back on that, or?
I would say, the only thing I might change is, and we'll have to work on the technology, you know, I like being a group better, so maybe we can see if there's a way to have those kinds of meetings in the training room would work in the future. And, you know, we invited the chairs and vice-chairs to, you know, kind of come and participate. You know, I'd be open to inviting other members of those bodies to, as long as we could keep it from, you know, just getting out of control.
Yep. And I, you know, and I, the chairs all appreciated it, which was good feedback to hear from them, that it was a benefit for them to hear this.
Well, and one of my mantras that I've talked to you guys about since, you know, I interviewed for the job here, is I don't ever want you or other elected and appointed officials to be surprised. And so this is just an opportunity to provide information sooner, so there are fewer surprises.
Yep. Okay. Councilmember Wong.
The Arts and Culture Commission met the first of this, first Wednesday of this month, and we discussed snowman statues. We have an existing mold, so we had a conversation with the vendor, and they just do really incredible work. They've done work in Roseville as well, and so we'll continue to have some of those conversations. And because we already have the mold, we're going to save a ton of money as well. So they're looking for financing for that at this point. The craft wagon is a go, so that will be occurring this summer, and we're just trying to decide on what the timing would be like, if it's going to be tagged on to, you know, maybe music in the parks or something. So still deciding those logistics. The downtown banners and the council chamber background are, they're taking a look at that and going to draft up some ideas and let us know what they think. Love's mural is also something we've discussed as well. There's a lot of excitement around that. It sounds like the owner has also met an artist herself and is really inspired by it, so we may be seeing something here in downtown soon. And then for the Planning Commission, we discussed, let's see, we discussed the sign ordinance and again, which actually was a good timing, because when we talked about the banners downtown and redoing those for the 135th anniversary, our sign ordinance did not support those banners being up there, so it'll be a nice, you know, adjustment. We also discussed the 2022 priorities for the Planning Commission. Again, that includes the sign ordinance, downtown furnishings, seating, park inventory, downtown parklets, and open space and sidewalk and pedestrian plans. And I believe that's it. Thanks.
So the banners don't include the sign ordinance. Does that mean there is no ordinance for banners?
We will make adjustments to include banners.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Thorson?
I have nothing.
And I don't have anything. General business?
I have nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
General business, Councilmember Wong?
Nothing, thanks.
General business, Councilmember Thorson?
Just one quick item, as the weather starts to change, and possibly looking at lifting the parking ban earlier if weather continues to trend upwards. I know we've done that in the past. And, you know, just to make mention of that and looking into that.
And I've got something for city attorney. I was on vacation, and I know we had, we had discussion before I left in regards to the White Bear Lake. I don't know if you can maybe just give a little update, what you can give an update on. I know Senator Housley was going to give a bill, and I don't know if that got sent or not, or was read, or?
I don't know the, I have it, I don't have it with me, the status of the various legislation. I know that there are competing proposals now being introduced. And I think, you know, one of them greatly broadens the DNR's authority over water appropriation permits. It's not my favorite version of it. There's another one that is an attempt to try and help out the cities, that is, I believe, Housley's version regarding the order that's been given and what the DNR's position is, what that order means in terms of how it approaches the city's appropriation bills, which starts with reducing the water, the water supply or water usage for cities by up to 40%. Maybe some of you have read that in the paper. So we are keeping track of that legislation. Some, I would say that from my perspective, there's some tweaks that could be used on that legislation. We are talking to some of the other cities. The legislation obviously goes beyond the 11 cities that are mentioned in the order. The, what we are simultaneously doing is there are, when the DNR sent out their notice that they were going to adjust the city's appropriation amount, we, it's been a couple of years now, but we were directed by council to challenge that, and you, along with all of the other cities, did in fact challenge that. That, in one way or another, has just been kind of slow walking through, probably a more sophisticated way of putting it. But each time we kind of gear up for a hearing, well, maybe the legislation changed. Well, there's another hearing at the district court level. So we haven't had a procedural hearing on it, on the merits, if you will. But it is the city's position, and it is other cities' position, that, you know, look, the one, this appropriation isn't, reduction isn't warranted. And candidly, you know, during the course of the DNR's trial at the district court level, their evidence suggests it isn't necessary. So we feel like a hearing in front of an AL, but the DNR feels like they have to do this based on the order. So we are working our way through that. The cities, to a degree, are cooperating. We feel like we have a common interest in this, so it's not going to be necessarily 11 different hearings with each city. We will all be in there at the same time. We think we can, with the commonality of interest, achieve a good result for the cities. But the hope is, candidly, and I think the best solution in all of this, is to take water appropriation out of a district court judge's hands, an ALJ's hand, and get a legislative fix on this. That's where this should happen. That's where the experts are on these water issues. And so it is my hope that legislatively we can fix it. I am absolutely not qualified, and the times I do try and predict what the legislature will do, I'm wrong. So I don't want to try and handicap that legislation or the status. But it is something we're tracking, keeping an eye on, and have recently inserted ourselves in on trying to make sure that the appropriate language that will best help North St. Paul and candidly surrounding communities will get heard. I don't have a good sense on how the votes are being tallied up. There's a lot of support in general for this as an issue, but I haven't kept track of all the various interests on it.
So who's spearheading it? Is it?
That's a good question. It seems so simple. I don't know. I know that the administrator in Oakdale has had a lot of involvement on it, but I don't know who wrote the initial version of the bill.
So I asked that question to Oakdale, and they said, no, it's not them. It's Lake Elmo that's spearheading it.
And that could be. Each time I ask, we get a slightly different version. And so, you know, at this point, what I know is that there is a commonality in terms of, none of us want the result that, you know, has been handed down. And so I think, you know, regardless of who spearheaded it, I haven't seen any, I haven't seen any turfiness yet that, hey, you're not invited. I think we all want to try and help and move this thing forward. So I haven't seen anything to exclude anyone. I just don't know how well organized it is at this point. And that's not to cast shade at anyone. That just may be my lack of knowledge, not that, you know, people haven't been included.
So, I mean, my concern is that it's not going to be heard this session. And if it doesn't get heard, then it goes back to the...
It does.
To the judge. And then we're back in the same position as before.
That's correct. So we are trying to do what we can to push these things along. We've been in touch with our rep and senator. I would say their support is unequivocal. That's at least what I heard. They want what's right for North St. Paul. And so, and we've had one conference call with them. And so I think they are, you know, tell us what you want, and that's, we'll try and march forward on this. They know this is an important issue. I mean, the, when I think of core services that a city provides, water is at the top of the list. And some of the proposals out there in either reduction or changing things cost a lot of money. And so it is something that, you know, we are engaged fully on. This is a top priority for us. It's just hard when it gets into the legislative's hands, because we aren't there babysitting, we aren't lobbyists. We do make our contacts, we do reach out to try and testify. And then it's the act of, you know, trying to keep in touch with multiple communities. We have, while a good commonality of interest, there are different approaches and opinions on it. So it, I haven't identified the quote, here's the person, the one person who's taking charge on all things. There has been, unfortunately, a little, you know, unorganization on it from my standpoint. But I think we are going to try and present a unified voice on it.
Just a quick clarification, too. This isn't a one-way path here, and there's one exit if we miss it. I mean, worst-case scenario... I mean, worst-case scenario, the chips fall not in not only our favor, I'm going to speak in North St. Paul's behalf, the chips don't fall in our favor and the orders are given to reduce our water consumption by, you know, whatever, they're limited to 55 gallons per person or this 40%.
Right.
And and or force us to switch over to surface water, i.e. St. Paul water. That doesn't get, that's not going to happen overnight. And we're going to have an opportunity, if it does get to that, to sue, countersue and go make our point heard, correct? I mean, it's just, it's just not, we're not going down this one single path, correct?
No, there's candidly, at the moment, at least three identified paths. I mean, one is the DNR and I think White Bear Lake, because they're part of the litigation, are going back to Marinon to talk about the status of the current order. We're not involved in that, but that's a path that impacts White, North St. Paul. We have the legislative path. Granted, there's two bills out there, but we're trying to corral that and be more assertive on that. And then candidly, we have the path of the administrative process, which in my opinion is where this should have started to begin with. That is where water appropriation decisions should be made. Those are the experts. So that's three readily identifiable paths. And that's even before you get to to more stronger actions about initiating litigation. This is just the straight-up processes. It is my sincere hope that the legislation fixes this. That would be the best for all. It's water, as we know, it doesn't observe boundaries like municipal lines, so it is a shared resource. The state is in the best position to help with that and marshal it out. And then just as, I'll call it personal commentary, the idea that we are scrambling to figure out how to provide water to our citizens when we had a lawsuit that dealt with water levels on a lake for recreational use is mind-numbing for me, but it is where we find ourselves. And I realize people will express it differently, but that's candidly how I see it personally. This was not necessarily an environmental issue. No one's trying to be, you know, degrade, degrade the environment, but we are trying to provide water to our citizens in a responsible manner. And that's what we want to be able to do.
I appreciate the update. Appreciate the update because it's, it is very important to us. And I know that, you know, you're working on it, your staff's working on it, and all of a sudden, things got redirected. So I want to make sure that it keeps moving forward.
I would just add that to me, a really indispensable resource has been city engineer Dolly, very, very knowledgeable on the impacts. And so if anybody has questions on the impacts of the order, he would be a good person to to talk to.
Good. Thank you. At this time, no other general business. We'll go into a closed-door session pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D03. The workshop session will be closed to consider strategy for upcoming labor contract negotiations with the groups listed here. The Ask Me Council Five representing the essential employees, the Ask Me Council Five representing the non-essential employees, the LES, local number 298, representing the police sergeants, the LES, local number 211, representing the police patrol officers, the Teamsters, local number 320, representing the Public Works and electric employees, and the IBEW, local number 160, representing the supervisory unit. At this time, motion to go into closed, closed-door session.
So moved.
So moved by councilmember Wong, seconded by councilmember Cole. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we will go into closed-door session and I think we'll be in the Sandberg Room.